Let me call the Thursday, December 21st business meeting of Norbert Borough Council to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if our people have joined the council people, like to leave this in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation and to the government of this home, the liberty and justice for all.
How's it going? President Bush?
Here.
Vice President Rick Gereus?
Here.
Member Birrock?
Here.
Member Fortner?
Here.
Member McGreevy?
Yeah.
Member Salmondson?
Yeah.
Member Winston?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here.
Are there any agenda additions or changes tonight? Once again, I'd like to thank our outgoing council members, Robert McGreevy and Robert Fortner for their service to the borough. This is their last meeting. It's been great working with both of you.
Mike Wester.
Thank you again. And I should also add that I'm excited at one particular agenda item for today, which is our Borough Manager employment agreement. So we're bringing Mr. West on as our Borough Manager. He's done a great job as Interim Manager a few years back. He did a fine job for us as Assistant Manager. So I look forward to passing that agreement and working as Borough Manager. That's it for my comments. Do you want to add anything?
We're going into Christmas season. Christmas is coming up within a week. I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. If folks are online and anyone has not finished off any holiday shopping, I encourage shopping in the borough, supporting our downtown, and give them one last push. I'm sure there's always an extra something you could get somebody on your list and help support our businesses. In that same vein, a lot of people are away during this time of year. Please know that you can always call the Norbert Police and they will be happy to do drive by and keep an extra eye on your house. It's a service they are happy to provide. And please just call and leave a message for the chief and that will be taken care of. In that same vein, it's a popular time of year for people to maybe look for things that they shouldn't be taking. So please be sure to lock your cars at night, take your keys with you, don't leave open packages in your vehicles, and just be smart about trying to keep everyone safe. So happy and healthy holiday season. Happy New Year to everyone, and may it be a wonderful New Year.
Thank you. And now let's take public comments. As a reminder, we've got about three minutes. Let's start with your name and address to make a comment. Mr. Westport.
So I'm Robert Westport, through 1 Windsor Avenue, Norbert. As a councilperson, I have the privilege to serve with Rob McGreevy, Robert Fortner during my time on council. And I just wanted to be here on their last council meeting. I was able to run with Rob four years ago and still with him. The thing about what they actually attribute to Rob and Robert both share that I want to acknowledge is that neither of them have ever complained about Norbert. They've never complained about Norbert. And they decided like, hey, here's something I like to see different in Norbert. And they both stepped up and they have actually acted upon their desire to make Norbert a better place. There's a lot of specifics. You can drill down into that if you have a question to ask them. Ask them about that. But the borough is a very different place for both of them having been a part of it. I also, I'm just so delighted to be here accidentally on the evening that you hired Mr. West. Also, he was like the Assistant Borough Manager hired by Shawn Metrick years ago and has served already for a while ago. So it's really a delight that you're back here. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Move to online. Anybody online wishes to make a comment, please unmute yourself and give your name.
There's a Ms. Amy and a Ms. Smith. We'll start with Ms. Amy.
Okay, sorry. Hi, that's me. Amy Smith, 127 Marion Avenue. I'm a teacher, so that's why the Zoom accounts are such as that. I want to first congratulate and say that I'm excited that Matt West is being hired to be the Borough Manager. Congratulations, Mr. West. I also want to thank the borough for beginning to put together a policy surrounding the commercial EV chargers on residential streets in Norbert. At this point, your policy does not address the issue of the commercial EV charger at 125 127 Marion Avenue. In your policy, we ask that you follow the guidelines for new placement and relocate the EV charger to a space where the public is expected at any time of day. Okay, one minute's up. I also ask the borough to prioritize equitable access and equitable impact in the public safety meeting. The north side neighborhood is much denser than the south side, yet there's only one EV charger on the north side, while there are two EV chargers installed on the south side. Good job, Sophie. What's more, the Elma Charger is accessible by a five-minute walk from most, if not all, south side homes. Ultimately, all residents who want to access an EV charger should have equal access to the station. And the most accessible location is at the center of Norbert, particularly the municipal lots and commercial avenues. Impact should also be equitable. The onus for this program should not fall on just one or two families. Of all the locations, 125 and 127 Marion Avenue are the only single-family-owned home locations for the EV chargers. While our neighbor at 125 Marion asks for this station, we, the other family most directly impacted, strongly feel that this is not the right location for a commercial fueling station. As a reminder to our neighbors and council, we would like to work with you to improve the location of this EV charger and ultimately the EV charging program in Norbert. As has been presented to the Borough Council as well as to the committee members, there are residents who have volunteered or who have otherwise demonstrated an interest to have the station located on their property. And that willingness to accommodate should be taken into consideration when applying the relocation part of the proposed policy. In the same vein of equitable impact, I ask the borough the rationale for raising the EIT tax, which disproportionately affects one segment of the Norbert population and not the entirety of the community. The trend of implementing policies that directly target individual families, like the EV charger placement at 125 127 Marion Avenue, or single segments of the population, like the EIT tax, is troublesome and arbitrary. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online wishes to make a comment? Doesn't look like it.
Well, that's...
There's iPhone.
Okay, go ahead, iPhone. Mute yourself and speak.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, Carol Marie Scanlon, Sabine Avenue. I don't have my audio going on. I don't know why. So I want you to know, has the RFP been written for Sabine Park? And I also want to know, have you been having discussions between yourselves or Planning Commission that is not on public record about the plans for 201 Sabine and Sabine Park?
Uh, yeah.
Yes?
Go ahead, keep asking.
Okay. And about the RFP, what's the timeline to have it sent out?
So there's been no change on the RFP since our last conversation. We expect that to come up next year, early next year, at council meetings. And council members discuss a variety of topics amongst ourselves, you know, just about any area of borough business, so.
But clearly it's not a quorum of this guy.
Correct. So anytime four or more council members are in the room, that's a quorum. That's a public meeting if we're talking about public business. So that doesn't happen except in the context of these big meetings or in executive sessions, which we announce, and which have certain specific topics that we can address. So.
And the same would apply to Planning Commission.
Correct. Planning Commission has the same rules. So if a quorum of Planning Commission is discussing a topic, they cannot discuss that outside of a public meeting.
Okay, now, my other comment would be about the EV charger at 125 127. I'd like to know what the timeline is to move that station, since it does not fall into the guidelines that are now written. As Amy Smith had said, there are other people who want it, even though I don't think they should be in residential areas. They should be in the commercial areas, which is why they're called commercial chargers. So what is your timeline or your plans with moving that EV station?
So I do want to address a misperception. These are not commercial chargers. These are run by the borough. They are municipal chargers. The borough owns them. The borough is responsible for them. They're purchased from a company, just like any other EV charger would be, but they are wholly owned by the borough.
Now, but wasn't this a pilot program? And since it was called a pilot program, so in a pilot program, you see what works and what does not work. And where you have it placed right now really doesn't seem to be a great place. And the Smiths have really, you know, they've said they don't want it. The Harveys were successful in having theirs moved. I want to know why the Smiths are not being given the same courtesy as the Harveys were, when they really did not want that EV station where it is. Even though Michelle Pananopoulos did, she has a driveway. It doesn't really affect her, but it very much affects Amy and Kevin Smith. Fred, not sitting in our...
The topic is going to be covered.
You're at three minutes.
Yeah, the topic is going to be covered further in the Public Government Safety Commission for the pilot program. And I will note that the Smiths share a driveway. They have a driveway, much as Michelle does. And it is in front of Michelle Pananopoulos's house. And further discussion of the pilot program will be at Public Government Safety. All right, thank you, Carol Marie. Is there anybody else who should make public comment? It doesn't look like it. So let's move on to...
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hi. This is Kevin Tang, 127 Marion Avenue.
Oh, sorry, I'm still in. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, we, it's all the same account. So yeah, again, Kevin Tang, 127 Marion Avenue. Again, I just want to take the opportunity to congratulate and welcome Matt West as our new Borough Manager. We're excited to have you. I just want to express our regards there. And again, we want to thank the council for starting the, creating and implementing the policy for the EV charging stations. Just again, want to reiterate that the current drafting doesn't, our location doesn't quite match the expected requirements. Specifically, the location is expected to be visited by the public during normal hours of availability. There's also no park or businesses in the area. And if it does meet the criteria of proximity to a separate station, then generally that's the entirety of Norbert, if you look on the map. Placement does not comply with the policies and installation at the minimum seems arbitrary. Further, in terms of data and utilization, if you look at the information that was provided, the South Essex Charging Station only sees 40% of the usage compared to North Essex Charging Station. And again, it's just, if there's only a limited number of charging stations for the borough, then they should be placed in the maximum way to make sure that everyone has equitable access to it and everyone is able to enjoy those usages. Again, I want to thank the committee for starting the policy and the council for starting the policy process. And we want to again mention that we look forward to working with you, finding an equitable solution about this issue. And again, on the proposed EIP, again, in terms of equitability, is it true that it really will be an equitable impact to everyone? How many residents will be effectively exempt as are already paying the Philly Wage Tax? And then how many of them are already on the higher earning percentile? Could there be a more equitable way of raising the borough's revenue that impacts all residents equally? And how does this updated tax structure compare to the surrounding towns in Lower Mary? Are we punishing residents for choosing to live in Norbert? And finally, what is the fiscal goal of introducing such a tax? What are the planned uses? We feel that residents have a right to know what projects or taxes are being used to fund, and there has been insufficient communication in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. We can talk a little about the EIT when that comes up. I'd see. Anybody else? Did I miss anyone? Okay, moving off the public comment. Consent agenda.
I move to adopt consent agenda.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we were voting on consent agenda. I'm going to choose C. All those in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, Ira, if you can just say aye during these votes, that'd be helpful. Push look at your cameras up. You can just say aye, if that works. Okay. He's not. Aye, unanimous. Try to deal with Santa Claus, hopefully in a less Philly way.
Andrea, Snowball, under COVID.
Our first item on consideration is the budget. Hoping somebody's coming here.
I move that Borough Council vote to adopt the 2024 budget.
Second?
Second.
Okay. There's no changes since the last time we addressed the budget?
Right. The only thing that was different from the preliminary was the change to expected real estate revenue, which we adjusted about $7,000. So if you look at, compared to the preliminary budget, on a budget, it's about $7,000 richer. And so it means that we're only going to be expecting general fund reserves using less than $100,000.
Okay. And we still anticipate having substantial general funds or is it like over our target number?
Right about it. Right near our target, if not a little bit over.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I think somebody, one of the participants has, is unneeded, so folks can hear. Join them on Zoom. So I just got a request to please mute participants.
We'd be able to hear that, that wouldn't be...
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything, so. Not hearing folks outside. Sorry.
Alan, it's the one labeled iPhone.
It's an iPhone.
Okay, that is, yeah, that's... We can mute it.
Just mute all?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if anyone can hear, there's kids occasionally because Santa Claus is right next door.
Close the door, but it's...
Okay, any other discussion of budget, Charles?
Just for the record, that the budget has been posted and has been available for public inspection since the last business meeting. And the legal notice of that posting of the budget having been available on both the website and for inspection for a hall was published in the Main Line Times on December 3rd, 2023.
And as is usual, you know, we've discussed the budget over the course of a couple of months. Mr. West had an excellent budget presentation, laid out a lot of the details of the budget. Been an extended process, as it usually is. All right, let's vote to adopt the 2024 budget. All is in favor. Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Let's move on to 9B, the property tax.
I move to approve adopting Resolution 2023-13 for 2024 property tax to 9.865 mils.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's a 92 information. So there was a, you know, there was some...
Property tax.
This is property tax, but there's some questions about how the borough funds itself. And really, we have two ways to raise steady funding. I mean, one is to raise our property tax mileage. You know, we can raise the mileage that falls on our property owners. There's about, I think, 1,200 property owners in the borough that pay the property tax. A lot of other places have a 1% or higher EIT. There are only, what did I say? There are three municipalities? There are only three municipalities in Montgomery County that don't have the, that didn't have the EIT. It was us, Lower Marion, Upper Marion. Everybody else in the county had the EIT. So we've since adopted it, but you know, it is the overwhelming majority of municipalities in Pennsylvania have an EIT. And as a result, a lot of borough residents are paying an EIT outside municipalities. So by instituting an EIT ourselves, that money comes back to the borough, doesn't really affect the taxpayers who are paying it elsewhere. There are a number of people, of course, who are paying this for the first time, but there are also a lot of people who are paying it in places like, I can't think. What has it around here?
Everything.
I have a document. I'm trying to see which one. Doris Town.
Well, yeah.
With help hands. I'm looking. I'm making sure I have the right one here. You know, a lot of people, Newtown Township, Woodbine Township, Havreford Township. Actually, I hope it doesn't. Anyway, there are a lot of people in Norbert, who live in Norbert who work someplace that has an EIT, who will be, their EIT money will be returning to Norbert as a result of this policy. So that's one of the reasons we're doing it. The number of people paying an EIT versus the number of people paying property tax is pretty similar. It just slightly, you know, changes who's paying which taxes a little bit. It's a more stable tax. I mean, property taxes or property values, that's not true. It rises with inflation. So as wages rise, the EIT rises. So just about every municipality in PA has both a property tax and an EIT. Those are sort of our two tools to raise money. And we don't have really any others. We can't, we can't do anything else to realistically affect our bottom line significantly. So that's why we're choosing to keep the property tax as it is and institute the EIT, raise the EIT at this time. All right. Right now, we are talking about the property tax, staying at 9.65 mils. Any further discussion of that? All right, let's vote on property tax remaining at 9.865 mils. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Ira, it is unanimous. Can I see the public hearing?
At this time, we'll adjourn the public meeting. We'll adjourn into that public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 1061. This is an ordinance that proposes to amend the tax for general revenue purposes on earned income and net profits derived by borough residents and non-residents working in the borough to a rate of 0.75%. Three exhibits. One, Borough Exhibit 1 is the ordinance itself. Borough Exhibit 2 is the proof of the ordinance with the Montgomery County Law Library on November 21st, 2023. And Borough Exhibit 3 is the proof of, sorry, sorry, the legal notice of tonight's hearing that was published in the Main Line Times newspaper on December 3rd, 2023 to advise the public of this hearing. This ordinance is a very simple change. Right now, Section 458, subsection 45, imposition of tax is already in the code and provides for a 0.50% earned income tax. The only thing this ordinance does is change the 0.50% to a 0.75%. There are no other tax changes or something else added. It simply raises it that quarter of a percent and makes it effective at the earliest effective date, which should at this point be February?
February 1st.
February 1st. Other than that, there are no other changes, no other oddities related to it. So it's just a decrease from the pre-existing 0.5 to 0.75.
And since this is a hearing, we have to reopen public comment?
Yes. Is there any money that has any public comment on this proposed ordinance?
Just making sure that they're bringing in. Okay, I've seen none. We will move on.
So, council, have any?
Oh, this one unmuted? No, that's us. Okay. Council members?
Just for the public's benefits of retirees on fixed income, what could it impact?
Don't believe it would have any, this is only if it's earned income from a government.
So anything you're paying federal income tax on, that's what this applies to. You don't usually, social security, you don't pay federal income tax, so you do not pay any EIT as well.
It's, just to be clear, it's also just earned income, not, so it's not capital gains. It's earned income means, and what you pay on a W-2 or 1099 or services. So to be clear, it doesn't apply to if you have stock holdings that you're getting capital gains on, things like that. That is not applied in that.
If you were to lose your job, you actually get that relief unless a property tax, the tax.
Yeah, I think it goes back to the point of, you know, when people are asking about equity or equality, one of the reasons why I'm leaning towards the earned income tax versus the property tax is, I do think it's important, we're here all the time, from residents, they want to be of the age and place. And certainly, the earned income tax is much stronger in that regard. We can debate the other merits of one versus the other, but keeping the mileage the same and increasing earned income tax is far more beneficial for entirely some fixed income.
I, I'm not going to go through my whole spiel of why I don't think it's the panacea that some folks may think it is. I think there are detriments to the earned income tax and that lower income people are paying a tax, like minimum wage earners or people who are service workers who are paying a tax that may, you know, be more troublesome for them than people who do have non-earned income, such as investments and people who are retired who have probably more access to non-earned income. So there are some concerns I have, and I don't want to just leave it out there that it is a fix-all to everything. Also, there's a very small amount of people who are paying a new tax, and I feel like we just implemented it last year and then we're bumping it up already. I feel like we're going back to the same level repeatedly. So just food for thought, food for thought, and to keep into consideration for any future changes to the EIT.
I do think it's a, you know, there are trade-offs to both positives and negatives.
Right.
I think the other thing that sort of motivated me was the recognition that because of the trash increase, which goes to property owners, they are effectively, it's not a tax increase, but we're already hitting that group.
Yes.
And based on the numbers that Fred gave us on what the average increase would be on property taxes, I think it's 300 and something, I mean, on the EIT, it's something like $300.
Yeah, those from that.
That Mr. West was able to provide to us. You know, that seemed like a pretty good trade-off compared to how much more most of us are going to be paying for trash as property owners.
I, while I understand that, there are people who both live in...
I know.
And now they're, now they're getting double. So I don't know that that gets a need or a situation. Yeah.
You know, I can also, we have information from our tax provider that about half of the money that we get from EIT is not a new tax burden for Norbert residents, basically. About 50% does not represent new taxes for Norbert residents.
So then, there's even a smaller amount that's getting kind of new. You're getting some from other jurisdictions, but not from probably the primary jurisdiction that most of the people in Norbert live in, which is Philadelphia. Yeah.
Well, we would, as a...
I understand. And I understand, I understand that, you know, there's pluses and minuses to both. I just want to put it out there that this is not a win-win for everybody.
We, you know, we didn't raise it to one. I mean, the...
That's correct.
Every other, just about every other municipality in the county has it at one or higher. And there's, there's some ways to get it above one. Most municipalities limit it to one.
Understood, but most, most of those jurisdictions also are required to give 50% to the school district. We are not. And so we're, we're getting essentially as much as most of those other are, even more, because we're getting 75, 0.75% instead of 0.50.
I do think it's important to point out, though, that because folks of the community have heard about the EIT and then talked about policing and how much we pay for policing. You know, the data aren't very clear, though, that there's not even a municipality that has their own police force without an EIT. So the feedback I've been getting is one of which, oh, unfortunately, I work in Philadelphia, so I already pay 3.99. I wish... I wish someone that could come home and, yeah, what's the percentage of our police budget? Obviously, we need money from somewhere. I guess you can't have both. So I, I would say we should, you know, also keep in mind that we have our own police force, and that, that comes at a cost. And we will be the only municipality, we would be the only municipality, we were the only municipality with its own force of the size without an EIT. So I think unless there's an ever-creep of way to pay for our own police force, I'm thankful for Matt, for you collecting these data, because that was not easy. We've been asking for these. I prefer to look.
And while I would say that, that we may be, I don't know about those statistics because I haven't, I haven't looked up those statistics specifically. But, okay, but the, the police force is a, is a, is an asset to our community that, that should be paid for equally as it, as it benefits, you know, pretty much everybody in the borough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say when you're looking at our, at our, at our millage and at our EIT, you know, if you look at all the other boroughs in, in the county that have their own police force, you know, we're kind of right in the middle in terms of our millage. We're the only one that doesn't have a 1% or higher EIT. You know, it just, it's costs, right? I mean, it's, there's benefits, obviously, but there's also costs.
So I, I would, I would say, you know, my argument would be let, let's, let's spread it out so then, and because it's a mass asset for everyone. So it's just.
You know, there's another thought that I just saw, which is renters generally aren't paying any property tax, right, at least directly. And we have a lot, you know, we're bringing more rental properties online. They get the benefit of borough services, and right now, they're not, you know, whether, you just said, talked about the police force. They get the benefit of the police force. Right now, they're not paying for that at all. And the EIT, as imperfect as it is, it is, you know, those people, at least now, are contributing those, some funds into.
They can really see that.
Into those, exactly.
Now that, now that that door has been opened, I'd like to address it.
Yeah, now I.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to go into this, this, but I'd like to address it. Our renters, where they live is owned by somebody, and somebody is paying property taxes on where they live. That would be the owners of the properties are paying the property taxes on where they live. If anyone has ever rented a property and thinks that their rental, their rental income is not partly based on what the taxes are on that property, then I don't know what they're thinking.
Yeah.
Because of course.
Well, that's why I said the word.
Of course, what they're paying is, is incorporated, their, their rental fee is incorporated into what the property owner pays in property taxes on this. Let's take another point. Those, those renters are near transit-oriented housing. That's, that's what we've all been working on. So, and most of those trains take those renters into Philadelphia, where they're then making income that does not come back to the borough. So in theory, in theory, because they're paying, they're working in Philadelphia.
Right.
Trains go both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I would, I would venture to take a guess that we have a lot more working in the city and coming out through the borough than, than, we have, there's a lot more jobs available in Philadelphia than there are in Norbert. I bet you a lot more of them are working in Philadelphia. We're not getting that, that, that income.
But you are getting, I'm the perfect example of that, right? So I primarily worked in Philadelphia. Until last year, every dime I paid in personal, in income tax, local income tax, went to Philadelphia.
Mm-hmm.
Now, today, I was working at home, yesterday, I was working at home. Two-tenths of my paycheck from the last two weeks is getting, coming with the tax.
See, it's got me, that's inconsistent. We're getting inconsistent earned income tax from people working in Philadelphia. Could maybe they, one day, we just. But if you, if you do it on a property tax, that tax is going to be spread out more equally.
But, but, but honestly, it's free money. I, all that money was, for the last 35 years of my existence, was all going to Philadelphia. Now, at least some of it's.
Well, because you're working partly in the borough. I, I just, I, I don't, I don't think that it is, I, I think, again, it's spread out shallower and wider when we do it on a property. And, and it's, it's least impactful to less people when we do it, when we do it. The water goes shallower and wider as opposed to deeper and, and, and smaller. Just points I want to take, keep, keep in mind when we're talking about equitable taxation. And this is just some, some thoughts. I know I'm not the only one that has them. And I, I don't want to be so mired and, and, and so mired and, you know, caught up in earned income tax that we don't think about this in a broader, in a broader perspective.
I, I do want to cut this, you know, I think we're, we're talking about a lot of the same point. I will say that, you know, our report says there are over 1,400 people paying the EIT, which is more than our paying in property tax, more than the number of properties we have. So, you know, at the very least, these are, these are comparable. You can say it's about, it's a similar number of people paying both. You know, there may be a few more, a few less, but these are, these are equivalent sizes of people.
Thank you for all this data that you provided, Fred.
It was really useful.
Yeah.
All right.
So at this point, the bodies will close the public hearing of the ordinance, and we can move forward with a consideration of the ordinance, which is next consideration.
Okay.
Okay, I move counsel of that ordinance 1061, amending the tax for general revenue purposes on earned income and net profits derived by borough residents and non-residents working in the borough to a rate of 0.75.
Okay. Any further discussion? I think we've had our discussion. Thank you, everyone. All right, let's vote on ordinance 1061 for amending the EIT to 0.75%. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, another public hearing.
It's time we will convene the public hearing on proposed ordinance 1062. This is regarding amendments to Chapter 475, primarily, which is the vehicles and traffic chapter, but there's also a minor change to the streets and sidewalks chapter under 446. Three ordinance exhibits. First, exhibit 1 is the ordinance itself. Borough Exhibit 2 is the proof of submission of the ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library for inspection, which was submitted on November 21st, 2023. And Borough Exhibit 3 is the legal notice of tonight's hearing, which was published in the Main Line Times on December 3rd, 2023. This is an ordinance, a long time coming. I think it was talked about.
Matt's smiling because he was here for that part. For the justice.
And I turn it over to Counsel Fortner to maybe provide an explanation as to what she believes are the high points, which keeps down the labor and war on putting this together, along with the ADP parking committee that was put together for the purpose of breaking this ordinance.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. This is the third parking ordinance since the committee was formed in October 2021. And most, if not all, of this chapter on vehicles and traffic has been rewritten. It's bringing it up, bringing it in line with what our current practices are, making improvements where needed. This particular ordinance is the same as the version that we voted advertise on November 16th. And the main thing it does is codify things like where the stop signs are, what the rules are for two-hour residential for the parking. Well, I, I don't want to do a laundry list of everything because that just feels like boring for everybody because there's so many sections in there. But we are updating fines for certain things, the parking in a snow emergency route, providing a little more flexibility in the rules for parking any chargers and, and just a whole host of different things. So anyway, it's, it's, hasn't changed from what you guys saw on November 16th. So anybody has any questions, though? I think that's good.
Let me open up the public comment once again. It's for a public hearing. Does anybody wish to make any comments on this ordinance on vehicles, traffic, streets, and sidewalks? Okay, see you then. Rob?
Yeah, I would just like to comment because actually Bob Wiseford and I were on the committee with Barbara. And this was a lot of work. Barbara did the lion's share over many years. And part of why this is important to flag is because counsel had hired Nelson Nygaard to do this study. It was in 2017.
Yes. Because I was on council the last time.
And that was a study that was fairly expensive. And there was quite a bit of criticism from the community. The counsel had hired a consultant, you know, done the study, and then didn't do anything, but it went on a shelf. And what Barbara has accomplished is she has taken that study and then the citizen groups that formed, and then the committee that she chaired within counsel to build on that work with thoroughness and commitment to dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And I think the process really shows integrity, you know, and a commitment to making good use of public dollars and following through. So that here we are with a policy that is the result of all this work. Thank you, thank you.
And I could, you know, this was something that really was a team effort, and you and Bob were a big part of that, but also many people who work for the borough. We wouldn't have been able to do a lot of the work that we did without Public Works Crew. They really did a lot. Support from past borough manager and other folks in the office, so. And John.
And I just want to say, I think I was actually one of the community members that offered that criticism. I was part of the parking task force. And yeah, I saw that, like, no progress has been made since that study was done. And there were a lot of good recommendations. And it was a very heavy lift to kind of go through and do all of that. And I just want to say I appreciate all of the work that's been done to make this very necessary and very important. And I know it's not very, yeah.
It's not sexy.
But it's a necessary thing that has to happen. Appreciate the work that went into it.
I thought it was the town's task. Matt, I've quoted you so many times over the last few years in part of it because you got this study and then talked about a sign box. Then if I've accurately quoted you, I used to say Matt said we had something like 386 signs or some ridiculous number in our borough that you then schooled us. It becomes meaningless at that point. So folks didn't even know sometimes what their street was because we were so overwhelmed with signs. You didn't know which way was up. So it's your last meeting and Matt returning this, this, you're beating. Good timing, you did.
And I think this does illustrate a way that we like to, we hope to operate as councils as we get our, our recommendations, maybe whether it be from the comprehensive plan or in this case, from the parking study. And then over time, you know, we work to implement these ideas that have come from the community or come from expert planners and been addressed in public meetings, been brought to the, you know, you know, kind of refined over the years and finally returned the policy. Hopefully, we try for a quicker horizon than this one.
Yes. And, and I would say that's to past counsel president Aaron Muterick's credit that he, in 2021, that is the right year. I, I'm going to form this ADP parking committee, and they're going to be tasked with, you know, taking the traffic, the parking study report and the task force report and doing something with it. So that is, it wouldn't have happened if we hadn't done that, you know, so.
All right. We can close the public hearing?
No other comments from public or the, for our counsel. We will close the public hearing, and this ordinance has now been a position consideration, which I believe is next on the agenda.
Sure, can I add?
I move that counsel adopted ordinance 1062, amendments to Chapter 475, vehicles and traffic, and Chapter 446, streets and sidewalks.
Wrong.
Okay, any further discussion at this time? All right, let us vote on ordinance 1062. Shabla za. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nine and G. Do you have any parking meters?
What?
All right, all right, someone, someone make a motion, please.
I move to approve adoption resolution. Adoption, 2023, 14, establishing parking meter rates, time limits, and applicable days, times, and defining the process and procedures for residential parking permits.
Second?
I'll second.
Sorry, I spaced on that. I was like, I wanted to write something down real quick.
You got a summary of this one?
Yes, this is the same resolution, excuse me, the draft that you saw at the November 16th meeting with one exception. At that being, well, this, this resolution contains fees for parking meters and new fees for dumpster and temporary storage units. It's, and it contains the, the fees that will be put in place in July when the two-hour parking permit, the new, that the new permits will become effective. It contains all those things. And we had initially thought anything connected with the changes to the two-hour restricted parking would all be delayed to July 1st, which is the date, effective date of that. But when we talked about this at our last meeting, we said, well, maybe it'd be nice to have this new process that we have for people to add or remove, request counsel to consider adding or removing a two-hour restricted area, be effective immediately so that people who might say, you know what? I don't think we need two-hour restriction on our block. They can start the process long before the new fees go into place July 1st, see if they can get their neighbors to agree and, you know, and see whether, so. And we talked about that and said, yeah, that, that makes sense. So that's the only change in here is to have, Section G will now be effective as of the date of the signing of this resolution. But everything else in here remains the same.
Discussion? I think residents won't see much change until we do change those parking permits in July. Parking meter fees are not changing.
No, they're not. We're just, we're just clarifying. It's just made it clearer that what it is and that when you're using the parking payment app, that any fees associated with that are paid by the user.
That was the major change. And now, you know, the borough has been eating those.
Some of them.
Eating the fees for the park mobile app.
Part of it, but part of it, not all, but at least according to, to string. At least the last thing he was told by that. I know.
Something.
Something, yeah.
How are we getting the word out on this for like, so that the people who want to exempt themselves from the two-hour restriction will impact that time? Because I just know what's going to happen is, two weeks before it goes into effect or the first time somebody gets a ticket, they're going to be upset and angry and say they didn't realize what was happening.
Right, so, so one of the things that I still plan to do before my email account is closed out is send either just some, I mean, the committee highlighted a number of things that we felt needed to be in the education materials that would go out. That's one of the reasons also to have a delay till July 1st for, you know, because there are some things that change in how the, the two-hour restricted areas work. So there are things that felt should be in there education-wise. And so I was going to send an email to Alan and Matt with some thoughts on that, but I also, because we made this change on when we wanted to have the addition/removal process effective, that I would draft something and send it to you guys. You can use it if you want, you can throw it in the trash. I don't really care, but I thought I could put something together for that. Certainly. Certainly, you know, that will be the decision of the office on when they send things out, when they start educating people and that kind of thing. As far as, you know, is there, is there some kind of race period, I think is what you're thinking, once the rules go into effect?
Well, I don't think anybody's going to find themselves unexpectedly in a two-hour zone.
No, I don't either. That's what I was going to say. Yeah, I don't think that's, that's what I was going to say.
And the time, the location, especially.
No, I think that's right. I think it's more about if you want to exempt yourself.
If you want to remove, yes.
You know, if you want, you know, that's going to take the process of getting your neighbors to agree, et cetera, et cetera.
And then council has to agree to go ahead and remove it. Council doesn't have to. This isn't a, you know.
I mean, I, I would expect that for the first couple of months, you know, we're going to be educating people. So if you start the process at that point, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
No, I don't either. And, and I don't, I think, I think that if there's enough notice ahead of time on when the, when you need to get new permits, I think, but even that, that, you know, maybe there will be some like, you know, initially if somebody hasn't registered their car, are they going to get immediately flagged or are they going to be like, um, here's a reminder, you need to go down?
So if they want to petition to change the, whether it's permitted or not, would it be before July or?
Well, they can, one, as, because it's, we're allowing this to be immediately effective, that part, that process, they can start it right away.
Okay, so it can be anytime.
Yeah. And before, yeah.
I mean, I thought that was a solid whole idea.
Yes.
Delaying it to July was to give people that opportunity. I just personally, personally, it was great.
It's mostly administrative, yeah.
But I just, you know, I just want to make sure that the word gets out effectively.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're always criticized for not doing that.
Exactly.
And I just want to figure out the best way to make sure our friends and neighbors who are in the two-hour zone, they, I say, have this opportunity.
Yeah. And, and they always will. It's not like this is the one and done and they, you know, they miss it, they miss it now. They can, you know, I mean, who knows? The first time they try to get their neighbors to agree, they maybe won't get 60% of the people. And maybe in another year, there'll be new people on their block who really don't like it and along with them and now they can get 60%, you know, so it's, you just have to see.
All right. Further questions? Okay, let's vote on resolution 2023-14 parking meter rates, time limits, parking permits. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is unanimous once again. Nine J.
I move to approve resolution 2023 continuing to adopt the 2024.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. This is just the listing of all of the fees charged for borough services, professional, you know, services involving consultation is professional usually.
You'll see the follow-up from, you know, that last conversation with fees that were included in the previous resolution have been included in this fee schedule with the exception of the two-hour zones. Those have not been enacted yet and once those become enacted in July, council will have to then, at that time, pass an updated fee schedule listing those per resolution.
And are there any other changes to the fees besides what we just?
There were some deletions. Police department is no longer doing fingerprint.
Okay.
It had, that happened during COVID and it just, there's no reason to keep doing.
All right. Further discussion? All right, we are voting on the fee schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yes. All right, nine and I change to the zoning code.
I move to advertising ordinance amending section 502 of the zoning code to allow multifamily house building type in 5A district or structures that are also in the historic district and are also contributing resources.
Second?
Second.
All right. And this is coming to us at the recommendation of the planning commission. And I see the chair of the planning commission, Todd Bressi, is here, so I thought we want to summarize our thinking here.
Chris, I want to clarify. Thank you. And I hope you all have a happy holidays. We want to finish your work. And I want to clarify, this is not coming at the recommendation of the planning commission yet. It will, if you do choose to advertise it, it would come to the planning commission. But.
You haven't officially recommended it?
We haven't officially recommended nor discussed it. You all may know, there is a proposal to add on to the structure of 119 Essex, some dental offices on the back and turn the first floor a bit into a dental office. It was, the application was accepted as an application for conditional use under a provision that allows mixed-use buildings on that block of Windsor Avenue. That provision was only intended for new buildings, but the applicant thought that was a path to convert the building and use it the way they did. Before the meeting, I had had some conversations with the zoning officer and we really weren't quite certain whether that was the appropriate application or not. So we, we, we listened to the applicant's proposal and we talked about the proposal of the planning commission, just in terms of whether we thought it was a good idea, whether we thought it was well-done, whether we thought it was a good thing for the community. And generally, there was support from the planning commission to this application for what the applicant wanted to do. Planning commission felt it was consistent with, you know, the goals of downtown, to have, have people living and working there. We were very happy to hear that a dentist who has an office on XISF in Essex already wants to expand and expand in NARB. Like, what could be better?
My doctor, I'm still a dentist.
Yes. There's a lot to like about this proposal. There were, and again, it was consistent with what we thought the overall objectives were for the zoning district. There are a few small items that we would still like to work on, some site planning issues. After the meeting, the zoning officer and I and one planning commissioner, Michael Godini conferred about the interpretations of the code. We also got input from the Montgomery County Planning Commission staff. Interestingly, all four of us had a different read. The issue is essentially this, that because of, when you begin with the underlying zoning that we passed in 2017, whatever, 2015, 16, okay, we're just getting, holding in on that to 2016. Then you layer on it the, the ordinance that council passed to lower building heights across the whole district. And then when you layer on it the historic district's ordinance, there's arguably a little ambiguity in the code because in some places it actually has standards for mixed, for multifamily houses in the 5A district and in some cases it says they're not permitted. So even there's a little, it, and then when you look at the way our code provisions for non-conforming uses are written, it's a thicket. It's a thicket. And we realized it was sort of an accretion of decisions and that there weren't real liberated. And so we felt that it would be better to create a path that reflected what we thought were good planning principles for 5A, reflecting the situation where we have a low height limit and a historic district and a building that is non-conforming in many ways to our code. We don't want people who have non-conforming buildings to have to go through a million hurdles and hoops if what they want to do is consistent with our objectives. And so Kevin, the zoning officer, and I and Michael have worked out this proposal because the timing, we thought it would be best to bring it to council first and then we can discuss it at the planning commission. The, the timing is that there's a conditional use hearing scheduled next month and if, if that's not necessary. I was going to be allowing this building type would be allowed if it were a mixed-use building. So there's nothing that would be allowed that would not be allowed already if it were different. In fact, if the owner, if we didn't have the historic district, the owner could have torn the building down, put up a mixed-use building, done all of this, and it would have been completely, you know. So we're not, we're not anticipating uses that wouldn't already be permitted. So the bill, the building type is allowed, the uses are allowed. And then there is an additional provision that if, if you, if your building is non-conforming in other ways, for example, this building is non-conforming in terms of its front setback, it's too far from the street according to the rules of 5A district. So if you have a non-conforming building, you can continue to use it. It's, it's not implied, it's explicit. You can continue to use it. If you add to it, you cannot add anything that's not conforming. So if you add to it, anything new has to follow the rules, but the building you have, you can keep. And then finally, there's a, there's a provision that says if you have a corner building, both of the facades need to be treated with similar architectural treatments. That's, that was a provision that was put in a while back because we, we didn't want people to have a side, a side of a house that didn't approach the street as, as nicely as the front of the house did. But now that we have the historic district, that building has one kind of design for the front and another kind of material design for the side. So you can't have that rule. And the historic district's philosophy is different. So to avoid that conflict with historic district, the ordinance has provision that if you have a building that is a, if, if this building is a contributing resource in historic building, you are not obligated to follow that rule. So in a way, we're just sort of unkinking it. Solicitor reviewed it. He found, I think one thing we corrected, but I think we, I think among the five of us now, the solicitor and the next week, we ironed out all the problems. I think in the long run, what this means is that we ought to consider at some point trying to clean up the codification of our code, not change our code, but just clean up the codification to make sure that the additions that have occurred over the years are not creating these unfortunate situations. At the end of the day, what this means is the applicant can then make this application. It will be a by right application that will not have to be a conditional use hearing. So it'll be easier for the applicant and it will provide an outcome, which is, you know, an expanded dental office and residential above that the planning commission feels is essentially a good outcome in a site plan and is largely a good site plan with a few tweaks. So that's what you have in front of you. And again, we, we thought it'd be better to bring it to you in December rather than wait for the planning commission to look at it in January and then bring it to you in January. Why, why make that? Thank you very much for letting me. Mr. Walker, if you have anything?
Hey, how are you? Give me a clarification.
I just think just for council and the public's clarification, because some of the terms do get a little confusing and I always have to help to think it as well, that a, you can have a mixed use in a mixed-use building, but this would also allow you to have mixed uses in a multifamily building. So there's a difference between multifamily building that has mixed uses and a mixed-use building. Mixed-use building is a different form of multifamily building. The other issue is that a multifamily building is not the same as an apartment building. So an apartment building, again, has, has design standards that that is not what this is. And a maximum, more than, I think, five is the maximum for a multifamily building. So it, it's not providing for additional apartments or, or anything like that in the, in the 5A district. So I think those clarities are important to highlight. I did circulate an email to council earlier today about additional change that we should add to this, so it would be a subsection F to amend section 401J, which is very similar language to what is in here under subsection D related to building form. This is more related to nonconformities related to site plans, but it's, it's the same concept to amend it to provide that if you have a non-conforming use of a building that is allowed to continue on the site, but that cannot be continued in any addition or extension of that building. So I would, would ask that council, if, if council wants to motion advertise, we'll advertise that additional change as well.
Do we have to move to make that, that change or?
I think it would be clarity that one, one motion to approve with that addition.
We don't need to approve the amendment beforehand? Like, have you, are you voting?
I mean, at this point, it's just motion advertise.
Okay. All right. So I, I did have a substantive question, because I wanted to make sure that this did not allow for more. We decided that multifamily is, is not wise in that area. We want to keep retail on the ground floor. So I did ask if this is going to allow more multifamily, more just residential in the 5A district. And I believe I've been convinced that it will not, that it's, it does not allow more people to become multifamily, or more buildings to become multifamily buildings that aren't existing.
That's correct. This only applies, and again, in order to be a, in the historic district, in order for the building to be a contributing resource, it has to have already been there before 19.
40 since.
Whatever, whatever. So if you demolish something, you wouldn't be able to implement this because it would not be in the historic district and it wouldn't be a contributing resource at that time. And the reason, I mean, too, technically, you could have a contributing resource of this building, so the building itself has to be a contributing resource for the rest of the block. So if they're, you know, if the building is there, they'd be able to use the, the multiple use in that building currently. So that would not introduce some.
Any other questions? A little bit of a nerd here.
And I think the highlight is that it does encourage, as Mr. Bressi said, the, with the turay care down of a multifamily building to building mixed-use building with few apartments on the top, not enough for a big apartment building, it's a mixed-use building, but a few residences based on the top and commercial on the bottom, this would preserve the current building.
So it sounds like the amendments are allowing by right, something that would encourage adaptive reuse and historic preservation and mixed use in that area. Correct?
It also makes existing non-conform, in some particular, existing non-conforming uses legal, which is important to our planners.
Yeah, I know.
Especially for us.
Our planners always tell us that that is a wise course of action, reduce the nonconformism. Okay. All right, let's vote to.
Do I have to move to?
Move to advertise that it's amended, yeah.
So I'd like to move again to advertise, to advertise ordinance amending section 502 of the zoning code to allow multifamily house building type in the 5A district or structures that are also in historic businesses and are also contributing resources as, and with the additional amendment that the solicitor and mistress recommended to us.
Second for this motion? The revised motion? All right. Let's vote on the revised motion. All those in favor? Okay. All right, voting to advertise. All right, nine J. Okay, so this is an appointment to the planning commission. There were, just some information on this, there were two positions open in the planning commission. In the consent agenda, there was an alternate member of the planning commission. The intention of the alternate position was that when a position came open, the alternate would move into that position. So we have appointed, I'm going to try to get a last name correct, Jennifer Iannicombe, to be one of the open spots in the planning commission. We have three applicants for the other open position. These are terms starting in January and there's some major business coming before planning commission in January, so we're going to get this in order. Councilor, the application materials are in the, are in the packet. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the positions. So everyone can nominate a, a member and then once we have, let's see, we just, we, we vote after each nomination, right? Or do we?
I would take nominations and then you vote on them in the order in which they were nominated.
Okay.
And as soon as a nominee has the majority, then voting stops. So you don't have to vote.
Correct. Okay. So we'll, we'll open the floor to nominations right now, so.
I have a question for you. Sorry, for John. Given that we already have an alternate position. Given that we already have an alternate position established, can we, because this changes my thinking, can we nominate someone for both the seated position and the alternate, given that we already have an alternate spot that is also now vacant?
I would, I would not take that action at this time.
We'll do it separate.
I think I'd leave separately on the agenda, and I'd also confirm that that person would not take the alternate position.
Okay. So, just in our thinking here, we could potentially then at the next meeting...
In the future, obviously, yes. But it should be a specific appointment.
My understanding, too, is that that alternate, looking at the MPC, has to be appointed by resolution, so it's not just a simple motion. So, it's an odd requirement for planning commission alternate. If you look at the last time Ms. Iannacome, if you looked at when she was appointed, there's a resolution that was included in that, which is a standard resolution that came from the state.
And that's what I just wanted to clarify, that was for the individual and not the position?
Yes.
In other words?
Yeah, it names the person to be appointed as that alternate.
Mr. Bressi's has been successful having an alternate on commission.
Absolutely. I hope you would consider that strongly.
All right. So, I think we will consider adding another alternate, appropriate or mixed use, not at this time, since it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Can I ask Mr. Bressi a quick question here? I always defer to the planning commission, really, because I want to understand what skill sets are needed and perspectives, because I know that you've done a really great job of kind of curating diversity. There are two planning commission members who have served for a very long time, who are architects, who I believe in the near future perhaps would not, would retire from their seated positions. So, at some point, having another architect to fill one of those positions may, in the next few years, be important. Is that...
I'd say so, yes. Especially actively practicing architect who is involved in the kinds of development we see at the planning commission, which is sort of small-scale mixed-use apartment type.
And having someone there, even as an alternate, just to listen and learn, so you're not walking in cold.
It's very valuable.
Okay. And how many architects are on the planning commission right now?
Well, there's Jim, and Dave, and Heidi, and Jennifer, since you've reappointed her. They're all very different, but Jennifer is not licensed, well, I mean, I've seen the other Jennifer. Jennifer's practicing, Dave and Jim are not really practicing now. Heidi is practicing, but she does smaller scale, more residential, more licensed, they have different practices.
Can I ask another question?
Yep.
So, for, I saw that on the HART, there can, for the list of members, it listed one member from the planning commission and such. Would that affect if one of the members is already on the planning commission, I believe it's Jim Cornbell?
Jim Cornbell is the cross-appointed.
Right. So, would that make it two members on HART that will be from the planning commission then?
Actually, Jennifer Chieski, yeah, is also on both commissions on the HART, and that was just council's decision. But there must be at least one across the board. That doesn't mean there can't be two or more.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the planning commission. Go ahead and make a motion if you'd like, anybody?
So, I would move to appoint Aaron Graves, given his experience. I would then, at the next meeting, like to speak to Mr. Vishwali, who is a practicing architect, and ask if he would be interested in an alternate to tee him off. So, now I can't move for that now, but that's my thinking. So, right now, I would say I would make a motion for Mr. Graves.
Okay. Are there any of nominations? I was probably simplifying. I do want to note that all of our applicants are, do, are well-qualified and give thoughtful answers to the questions that we asked on our form, and I think we've all do a great job on the commission, and thank them for stepping forward. We appreciate your willingness to take on this, it's a lot of work.
I guess just from a personal note, when I was appointed civil service, you know, I put my application in along with somebody else, I didn't get the regular slot. I was given the alternate slot. I, I'll be honest, at the time, I kind of looked at it like a consolation prize, and it turned out to be great to be the alternate for that, actually, it turned out to be, I think, only a year, but I was able to, you know, be at all the meetings, provided, but just didn't provide the vote, and obviously, went from there to member to chair. So, it should not be viewed the way I view it, the consolation prize at all. It's really important, and especially in this situation where we kind of anticipate that people might be stepping up in the near future.
Yeah. Okay, so we only have one nomination, so we will proceed to a discussion on a nomination and a vote. I'll just say briefly that I noted Mr. Graves' interest in low-income housing, advocacy for low-income housing, if there's something NARV could certainly use more advocacy for low-income housing. Housing prices are a great challenge for, for everyone in the community, so that struck my eye when I saw his application.
I felt, once again, we're, we have an embarrassment of riches, but I, like Cindy, thought that Aaron's experience would maybe bring something that the planning commission could really benefit from, so...
All right. Let's vote on the quiet of Aaron Graves to the planning commission. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. That's for a term ending 12 through 2024. Okay. Last on our business is the Borough Manager Agreement.
I'll jump on this.
Cindy should, yes.
Scratch that term off. I move for the approval of Borough Manager Employment Agreement for Mr. Matt West.
Okay, is there a second? All right. Yeah, I think we've all been impressed by Mr. West's performance as the new manager and stepping in and taking on a lot of immediate responsibility and bringing the budget through a conclusion, which is always a challenge.
We hope you're as excited as we are, yeah.
That's right. And we know, we know you won't end the meeting relatively early, so we won't create you anymore. We'll just move on to the project.
Just one brief comment, I think also what we've seen with manager West is not just his ability to manage the budget and to trash contract and to do all of the easy, but also to work so well with the staff. And I can say that based on conversations that I've had with so many of the staff members. And the council, I think, recognizes how important that is, that the manager and the staff work seamlessly together, and there'd be good morale, and that this be a good place to work, and I think that's something that you really can bring. So, I'm excited about that.
Well, which is projected back to you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, those are the things that I hold near and dear to my heart, that I can't do this by myself. It's not, you know, it's not me, it's not the Matt West Show. I am only as good as my staff, and my staff are only as good as I am. So, I wanted to take this time to thank the staff that I've been working with up to this point, Alan, Chief John String, and Jeff Eldon, and all the public works crew. They've just been, I couldn't have gotten through the last six weeks without them, so kudos to them, I appreciate it. And really, one of the driving forces for me to consider in accepting this position was due to the staff. You have a really good staff, and I'm excited to work with them. I also wanted to also project to you all, it's not just about staff, it's about you, and this group especially, I'm really excited to work with you all, and I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've put into this process, and this has been a rough several weeks for all of us, and how we've all weathered that, I believe that that bond has been formed. And, you know, it's, it's built on trust and mutual respect, and it goes both ways. It's not just you down to me and down to staff, it's also from staff projecting up, and we're all in this together, we're all doing the same thing, we all have different roles, and I'm really excited about this new challenge, and I thank you for instilling the trust in me, and looking forward to the next year, or two, or three, we'll do that. Appreciate it, thank you.
Hopefully, more than one.
Did we build all these incentives and things for more? Just, you know, the last couple of weeks, you think it's, you said it was very stressful for you, you know, as the newbie on the council and jumping right into multiple crises, all I can say is that, you know, like, rather than me feeling like, oh my God, what have I done to myself, you really kind of made me feel like very confident that we are on the right track, doing the right things, felt very comfortable with all of the information that you imparted to me in a very short period of time to get me to understand that in a way that didn't make me feel like we were in just complete crisis management and weren't part of the same. So, I, in particular, really appreciate your work over the last couple of weeks, because I live in that completely at sea without it.
I do want to stress to members of the public, who may be hearing this, that these are administrative crises, you know, the borough is in financial shape, the borough, you know, borough functions are continuing, it's just, you know, a lot of complicated end-of-year budgeting material.
Yeah, I should make that clear, that I'm really just talking about the budget as someone who's never seen a municipal budget in detail before, I've been at some of these budget meetings, but just having the understanding of the budget in a way that was allowed, able to inform me and make my votes informed in a way that, you know, was very, in a very short period of time.
All right.
I just want to chime in, welcome home, Matt.
Yeah, that's the way.
We're really happy to have you back.
Thank you.
Now, we actually have to vote, though.
Sure. People told me that I was a little hasty on the vote there, so now we're voting to approve the Borough Manager Employment Agreement for Matt West. All those in favor?
Yes.
All right. I'll make sure this is the end. If it is the end, it's excellent. Congratulations. That is our last item of business tonight. The reports have been filed in the newsletter. Any new business or old business? Okay. I have to note that, comments really good, council, I'll note that we currently plan to not hold our January workshop meetings, it's going to be right after our reorganization meetings.
Reorg is on the second.
Yeah, reorg will be on the second, and I think we're planning not to have the workshop meeting in January, and proceed to the business meeting. At the reorg meeting, we will set dates and times for the future meetings of council and the committees, and I'll be talking to people about committee assignments in advance of that. Any other comments? Any good, council?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, happy holidays. There will be no executive session tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I knew that we adjourned.
Okay, we adjourned, thank you.